Option of the agenda for board study session. Under the provisions of the Public Meeting Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll out an agenda that includes the time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. The duly executed waiver and consent to hold this study session will be signed by the Board of Education. A copy of the notice and the agenda for this meeting was posted on Friday, August 16, 2013, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Morrison, Missouri. At the same time, a copy of the notice was posted on the district website. The motion to accept the...
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Martinez and seconded by Mr. Trader to adopt the agenda for the ninth meeting. Mr. Spoh, let's call it a roll.
Mr. Eber.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Schorer.
Aye.
Secretary of State, aye.
Mr. Martinez.
Aye.
And Mr. Morris.
Aye. I have an amendment to the agenda. An emergency session is requested following this study session to discuss a personnel item per Missouri statute 610.021.3. The motion to accept the closed session.
I move we accept the closed session.
I second.
And moved by Mr. Trader, seconded by Mr. Eber.
Mr. Brown.
Ah, Mr. Brown. You're quiet.
Mr. Eber.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Schorer.
Aye.
Secretary of State, aye.
Mr. Martinez.
Aye.
And Mr. Morris.
Aye. We do have a consent agenda item on new hiring new teachers. Due to the influx of new students that we've had, the projections...
Do you have a copy of the hiring projections?
Due to the new hires that we have to help alleviate the overcrowding in the classroom, we're going to hire, I believe it's nine new teachers, is that right, at the elementary level? We're still waiting on one new teacher at the high school that we haven't hired, a full-time teacher for that. Is that correct? Need a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I move we adopt the consent agenda on hiring teachers.
My second.
Moved by Mr. Trader and seconded by Mr. Shabow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, same sign. We got nine new teachers. How's that? I like that. I like hiring teachers. Good stuff. That's right. Next item on the agenda is the strategic planning facilitator interviews. Board of Education is planning to interview the consultants who submitted bids in response to the Ferguson-Florissant School District RFP for strategic planning consultant services. We're getting ready to do a new strategic plan and would like to turn it over to Mr. O'Roon.
Thank you. The first presentation this evening will be by the Missouri School Boards Association and I'd like to introduce Phil Sparks. Everybody has been instructed that the time would be 10 minutes, about five minutes then for...
You know, and train stuff.
And I belong with Phyllis. My name is Janet Tilly and I'm the Director for Board Development for the Missouri School Board Association. Just a few slides, we're going to add a few copies of those slides. I'm Phil Sparks, the Associate Executive Director for Leadership Development and MSBA and just want to thank you for this opportunity to be with you this evening to share with you a little bit about our proposal and to answer some of your questions, of course. And just, I'd just like to mention for the serious approach that you're taking to this important process, I think there's hardly anything more critical for a board to do than to look at how we plan for the future. And that's actually, I guess reinforces what we have in our proposal and how we approach strategic planning facilitation with school boards and school districts in that this planning process and the outcome of the process is vital to the success of all of your stakeholders and really lays the foundation for all the work that we should all be doing. Provides that opportunity to align all our efforts in one direction. And so, obviously, you know, the strategic plan is one of your governing documents as the board and it provides that foundation, it provides the direction and sets the expectations that will lead everyone else in the industry to that common goal, those common ends. And provides you also that means for accountability to your stakeholders and community. Obviously, it's an important document for your students because that's why we're all here and why we're focused in this conversation. And a good plan will articulate what we want to accomplish for your students and ensure them that you're going to help prepare them for the future. And for administrators and teachers and staff, a good plan is critical to the work that they do every day. And it needs to articulate what they are going to be focusing on in the classrooms and with their students and that we're all headed in the same direction. So lastly, and certainly not least, is, you know, the plan represents your interests and desires of your community and provides an opportunity for them to be engaged and be involved and really articulate what their role can be in helping to ensure that their students are successful. So our proposal is primed around those concepts and district active engagement. And in that way, how we perceive that and how we've worked in the past is that we feel that it's necessary for all these stakeholders to be involved in the planning and development of the plan. You want a plan that, obviously, with the approach that you're taking very seriously that this is going to be meaningful for you. And for it to be meaningful to all of these stakeholders, they need to be represented at the table and be a part of the process. And we feel strongly that each of these groups have a role to play and will provide that opportunity for them to have commitment to the plan, to feel ownership of the plan, and to be engaged in implementing the plan as it's adopted. And we want to just share, just to kind of articulate a few of the details that are in our proposal and Janet Tilly's going to share a little bit of those details. We know that you have the proposal in front of you, that you've had the opportunity to examine it, you're going to have further opportunity to look at it, obviously, in more depth. We want you to understand that there really are five key phases in the planning process. And the very first one is establishing the mission and the vision. The wonderful poet Shane Miss Haynes, who just died recently unfortunately, said, "We have to believe and know that we can reach the other shore, but we do it together." And so, that is your mission and your vision. It's establishing where we are going, but holding on to that belief that we can get there. And you do that by looking at data first. And when we think about data analysis, sometimes all we think about are just test scores and those types of things, but we are oftentimes a wealth of data housed right here in this office and in your classrooms and in various locations. And so, it's stepping back in it saying, what data do we have? Where is it that we know we are going? And what does our data show us? And sometimes we do sort of a gap analysis to look and see, you know, we know where we want to be, but where are we at this particular point in time? To get there, we have to have clear objectives and strategies and action steps, and those are communicated clearly to those stakeholders who are involved in making sure that those move forward. The community is critical in this. We are faced with tough economic times. Oftentimes, our wealth is not necessarily in terms of dollars, but it's in terms of the expertise of the community members who are surrounding us. And it's about tapping into that expertise and knowing how to use it. We also have to monitor. We can plan all we want to, but if this plan goes on the shelf somewhere, it's of no value to anyone. And so, in part of our proposal and the work that we do with you is that we come in and we share suggestions of how to be able to monitor all along the way that we're reaching that distant shore. We believe in the full participation of all people. And you have asked for an accountability team or kind of 15 to 20 diverse stakeholders who are going to guide the development of these goals and these objectives. We believe strongly that those people should not just be figureheads. They have to be active, full participants in not just the planning, but also the implementation and the monitoring of this task. And in the proposal, you asked for very specifics about what are the actionable steps that are coming from your consultant and the strategies that we're using. But we also outlined in that proposal the actionable steps and the strategies that are responsible of the Ferguson-Florissant School District and the community involved. We know that we can reach that goal of having this strategic plan that serves as this foundational document for all decision-making, that it comes back to this one, one plan. As I outlined or talked about, you want this accountability team of 15 to 20 diverse stakeholders that will again be more than just figureheads, but guiding that vision and that mission. And then they will help to identify those areas of critical need. We know that we want to work on everything with our kids. But sometimes we have to step back and say, within this time span, and you have asked for a plan for about three to four years, during these three to four years, what are our critical needs and what will be our areas of focus? From this accountability team, then, we have called them goal teams. We're going to look at each one of the goal areas that this accountability team has structured for us. And a person or persons, depending upon how you want to operate, from that accountability team will act then as the co-chairs or the chair of these different goal team committee meetings. They too must represent all of those diverse stakeholders because we've worked the work. And if we are a part of the process, we have ownership in it. And so, you want to have people from all areas of the community with your teachers, students, and district administrators a part of the process. And then, as I mentioned before, we do have to step back and ask, you're a PLC district, you know what those PLC questions are. And that is first, what is the ultimate goal? Secondly, where are we at this particular point in time? And then, thirdly, how is it that we're going to get there? And then, that's what we will do in helping you with collecting this data, stepping back and doing the analysis of it. Want to continue for me?
Sure.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you. So just further elaboration that as it's in your proposal, but just to kind of highlight, with, when we have that foundation then and know where you are now, where you want to be, as then we would want the entire accountability group to be working on the objectives for student achievement, student performance. That's the part of your plan. That's what we're all about, is educating our students. And that serves as kind of the hub of the entire plan. So getting everybody kind of contributing to and on the same page with what we want to accomplish for our students. And then, the goal teams for each of those subsequent goals areas then have that basis of student achievement to work from to develop theirs as well. Then they articulate the objectives and strategies to what we want to accomplish and how we're going to get there. And goes back for that 15 to 20 group accountability team to review. We also want to provide an opportunity for the community to have input. And so, we would plan a couple of open forums and structure that for some input to review the draft and see if we're on track with what they want and desire for what needs to be accomplished for the community. With that feedback then, the goal teams would do their revisions and then further articulate how we're going to accomplish this, when it's going to happen, all the detailed specifics and what are going to be those benchmarks that will help us to know if we're making appropriate levels of progress in reaching the outcomes that we want. Until that then is met sufficiently and the final plan is submitted to the board for your consideration. Following approval of the plan, then we would follow up with an orientation to the recommendations we have for how to monitor and keep track and report progress that would be part of everyone involved, from implementation of the classroom through reporting to the board on your schedule. So that's kind of a very quick highlights and I want to give you the opportunity for any questions that you might have had that we haven't addressed either in the proposal or the decision.
Any questions, Mark? Mr. Sparks?
For a district our size, is it possible to put together a stakeholder committee of 15 to 20 to properly represent our community? I mean Ferguson-Florissant's, the large district versus...
Right, right. We were responding to what you had requested in your RFP. I think it will be challenging to really call it representation with that few. And we would certainly want to look at when we do that data collection, if you limit that accountability team to that few, I think we would want to explore very thoroughly that data collection stage of getting our current status and input so that we get representation of all stakeholders. And we could certainly be open to expanding our work to work with.
Any more questions, Mark? Very good. Good to see you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll see you in October or down at the conference.
Looking forward to it, yeah.
Thanks for making the drive from Columbia.
Sure.
To do a little housekeeping here, Ms. Hogshead sent me a message that she's been working since 3:30 this morning, so she's not going to make it today. So just wanted to let everybody know where she was. Since this is an irregular work meeting, we don't have to get the shoes. We don't need shoes anyway. Okay. Let's keep it rolling.
The next presentation is by William Munch. I'd like to introduce Janet Kewall. We'll script this.
Thank you very much, Eric. I'm really really worried, given you're in Morrison, in the Department of Labor and the Board. I'd like to introduce my colleague, Mandy Manus. And my name is John Grandon, we're from Blue Moon, Kansas City, Missouri. We had a talk to you this evening about creating excellence in any organization. And we believe that most organizations are striving towards excellence and pretty much in your organization, there are a few little patches and that's a word about if something we hope you pull those little patches in to get to the level of excellence that you've been striving for for a long time. So I'd like to thank you all for inviting us here this evening. Our organization is based in Kansas City, Missouri, and we're an organization more than anything when we concentrate and focus on two areas, and that's leadership and technology. And we believe that combination of those two, what can accelerate schools and school districts in our country. And it's not even about accelerating, we believe it's all about lead producting organization. We all read about the situations in our school districts around the country and how we're competing internationally. We believe that there's a great opportunity today with our innovation to be able to lead product schools and school districts into a whole new era of managing their organization. So our mission as our company is to connect every student to opportunity and to connect our students to more opportunity. So we believe that strategic planning is all about jumping under the fishbowl into the ocean. And it's really about can you see the world in a little bit of a different way to the way most people are looking at the world, especially the world that we live in every day. So we approach strategic planning in a little bit of a different way. We use a lot of the principles of Malcolm Morris and Malcolm Morris to walk. And we look at four platforms when we go through strategic planning. That's creating unusual clarity, creating excellent relationships, focusing on priorities, and then creating successful habits. And like most organizations, when you're going to change, it's not something that happens instantaneously. This is an ongoing process and it's a process of continuous commitment. And that's why we look at those four qualities. We also look at the organization from eight platforms, looking at the organization from a leadership standpoint, strategy and planning, marketing and customer focus, and if we wanted to incorporate it in different terms, you may want to say market and student focus. We look at people management, information analysis, performance outcomes, technology and process streamlining. All of those components are what made up any good organization. It is a for-profit, a non-for-profit, a business organization or philanthropic organization, you have to look at the whole organization organization. So when we go through the strategic planning process, we look at all of those and we also start looking at what is the training that's required, what's the communication required throughout the school district, and what's the reward that they have to pay back. And we're not talking about reward by way of money. We're talking about what reward by way of, a good place to be, a place to grow up, a place to work, what's in the community and the individuals within the community when you're looking at the reward. So from a strategic planning standpoint, once you accomplish those aspects of the planning, you have to really connect all of that to the vision and mission of the organization, the goals and the tactics as we've presented before us. And it's the old story in life that every narrative begins with the first step. So we view the first planning portion as just the first step to a long journey that you're embarking on. So this is essentially the outline of what our planning process looks like. And as we heard before, it's all about creating strategies and goals and then creating the action plans. What's the assignment? Who's responsible? What are the resources? When is the completion and where is the project on an ongoing basis to make sure that you're on track towards the measurements that you set? And we believe that this particular plan is the way that one needs to look at the organization on an ongoing basis. So it's all about where do you want to be? It's all about shifting the distribution curve. Now, do you want to be in the open, you want to be in the middle of the curve, or do you want to be excellent? Being excellent means you have to be on the right side of the curve. That's tough in any organization, it's tough in any business, it's tough in any environment that we're working at. But we really have to decide where it is we want to be. Once we've made that commitment, then we have to do everything in our capabilities to be able to get to that, to that particular point. So if we make the assumption that the Missouri school, Missouri school districts in general are in the middle of that distribution curve, where Missouri ranks about 22 out of all the states in the country, and if we look at this far part of the curve, we have to say, this is the distribution curve for this school district, then you have to decide, okay, we know where we are on the map as far as the distribution curve is, where do we want to be and where do we want to be there? So if this is where we are on a percentile basis within the Missouri school districts, we have to decide now where do we want to be in this distribution? And at a particular time point, do you want to be in the middle of the curve or do you want to be right on the other side of the curve? The commitment is easy, the planning is where the difficulty comes in, and that is keeping people accountable for the goals that you actually set for them. So we take a little bit of a different approach and if we do a self-assessment of every stakeholder when we go out and start the strategic planning process to understand what they perceive themselves of the entity or the organization that they're working with. This is a map that would come back as an example of the participants within this self-assessment. And this would give them a score of zero to 10 on the arbitrage of this rank or curve. And again, it's a self-assessment, it's not our assessment of how that progresses. This is how they view themselves from a performance standpoint on each one of those aspects within the organizational structure. From that, we establish a baseline. Then once we have the baseline, we conduct certain workshops under each one of the eight platforms to try and how determine what the goals are that need to be achieved with each of those platforms. Once we receive all of the information from the stakeholders that go through the workshops, we come up with something like 350 to 500 different items that have to be addressed. And from those, we prioritize them into which of the items we're going to best shift that curve to the right. In other words, what are the biggest influence points that can, that the school district can adopt that will start moving the change in the organization? We cannot predict that beforehand, as we said, this is only the first step in the process. Once we've done that, then the accountability is brought together when we have action plans on those top priorities and focus on those top priorities only. Once you focus on the top priorities, all of the other priorities will start filling in and going through the internal process over a couple of years, those other items will start coming to the top. So this is a real organization and we're an assessment with certain stakeholders and this gives you a view of the difference between the different stakeholders and their perception of their plan. And what it does is it shows you whether there's alignment in an organization or not. Very often, we talk about alignment, but we struggle to measure it. This is a way of measuring alignment. In this particular case, you can see there was one person, and that's the green shadow there, that was out of alignment compared to the rest. Well, this was a new person within the cohort that hadn't quite understood the total organization. This is what the representation of this particular organization looked like after they'd done the self-assessment. So one could say there were areas of strength, there were areas of weakness on their self-assessment. And then, when, once you do it at the highest level of the organization, we draw down, and as you know, this is organizational leadership, we go into understanding how well do they understand vision, mission, core competencies, et cetera, of the organization, if those elements are already in base in the organization. Then we go through the strategic planning process, we focus on smaller goals, and we go through very much the process that our previous president made to you. And it's all about prioritizing the goals according to the demands within the scope of the vision, mission, core values and core competencies of the organization that we focus on. And then we talk about marketing the plan as well. It's not good having a plan, as we mentioned, if a plan is sitting on a shelf. And it's the old story in business planning, it's not about the plan, it's about the planning that's very, very important. The process is almost more important than the end product is, and the principal focus is not really the value, it's the ongoing engagement within the plan. So we believe the whole idea of planning is to pull everybody in the same direction and we'd be happy to entertain any questions if you have a question.
One of the games, have you ever walked a trider?
I was one of the original board members of the Excellence in Missouri Foundation back in the very early days of the sort of office establishment here. But I'm not a certified trainer, no.
Your proposal talks about collecting like 250 to 500 items.
Yes, correct.
Are those self-developed by us or is that a set of questions that you bring to us or...
Those are what we submit from you as you take this to the workshops.
This is not a can.
No, not at all, no. And it really depends at which stage the school district is at right now, and we don't really understand what plan you've set previously, so this is a phase of catching up to where you are and starting to understand where you'd like to go.
I'd like to add that, one would go, Donald Iwer, Jackson...
I'd like to add that one week ago, John Lyer, Jackson City, doing a strategic planning facilitation for Missouri Department of Education, Dr. Chris Castro. And the thing that I felt was the most energizing was how into the process the entire group was. Like that screen where they have, where they have a grid that shows like how people rank themselves continually throughout the whole day. They wanted to think, they had some discussion and then John was leading us to pass some insights into some areas they were going to. But they wanted to go back and say, okay, so here's how we assess ourselves. And one of the things that I think is the most important is that you not only have that hard data and a hard research that gives you a real deadlock, but you also really need to have activities and conversation that you're really engaging. So the people have the energy to do that kind of work throughout the day. And when John said, okay, I think we're done, it was at four thirty. Everybody was so into the whole process and had enjoyed everything that John led them through so much that they stayed for another, the whole entire group stayed another forty-five minutes and they wanted to keep discussing what they were doing.
Can you shed some light on the time commitment in terms of from start to, say, plan approval? What do you anticipate?
The regular step on the timing is generally your availability as a school district and who the stakeholders are already involved in the program. We have done this program in the workshop of about two to three days. And have had the report back to the client within about three or four weeks. So that's about the shortest time that we can do it. Again, it depends entirely on how much work you've done before and what work needs to be done. We can, I guess, select which might happen very quickly.
Knowing this is sure for you and probably for come. We just finished our fifth year of a five-year plan, started in two thousand eight through two thousand thirteen. It was the old CSET model, comprehensive school district plan, all smart, all goals, all holistic. And in that time, a lot has changed. We all know from the introduction of thirty-six to ninety plans, the introduction of EPX, the S E level, the introduction of five work areas, and that's changed that game. So and the entire, well, almost entire board changed. So more so, we built it from the ground up, so.
And this is a reference, and these are some of the books that we recommend for people to read before they come into the workshops. We're very much about book to bridge the highlands, very much about Finnish lessons where they talk about system change. And again, we don't try to make everybody young Finns in our country at all. But there's a very good system there where they do it from a systematic planning standpoint. So we look at it from a system standpoint and not from individual standards. We do understand that the education of the child is imperative and the outcomes of that is imperative. But very often, in strategic planning, that may be your surrogate end point, may not be your direct focus when you're doing your plan. The other thing is as well that we do spend a lot of time with the children. And we have done some planning programs recently where we interviewed the children to understand where they're coming from. And very often, the children have said, this is some of the first times we've ever been interviewed by anybody that's been in a process like this.
Any more questions? I'll ask for your time. Coming all the way from Kansas City, huh? Way from my grandchildren, she passed X at nineteen. Going back. You didn't bring a barbecue, did you?
Uh, we can talk.
All right, Richard Little, I guess Patreon Insight is next.
I'm going to go to PCG that are on the phone in Boston. Patreon Insight is here at this time, so move on to the next one.
Hi, Mr. Ross.
Hi, Mr. Ross. This is Paul Morris at the Ferguson Forest Department Education. And responding up to hook you into our system to give us your presentation on our strategic plan.
Thank you for your call.
All right, put your mic up here and see if that helps. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, this is William Yarney.
Yes, yes.
Uh, hey, Eric, yes?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Teddy. I've got the school board together in the phone here and two other folks tonight.
That's right, we got about twelve, fifteen people in the audience and six to seven school board members along with our superintendent and our board secretary.
Okay, well, terrific. Thanks, all, very much for giving P G G an opportunity to participate tonight. I'm sorry I couldn't be here in person, but not at all. We're the other key person of our team who will talk about the business. We're quite people with a list of just a bit of work tonight. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about some of them. Paul, do you want to just go ahead and talk through some of the key points of our proposal? And then take questions if any of them has them? I'd just like you to do that.
That'd be great. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Well, hopefully you've all got a copy of our proposal. Now, I'm not going to ask for expect you to read the whole thing. But when I think about P G G and I think about Ferguson Forest and the proposal board you put out and ask vendors to respond to, I think there's three main points that are key that I want to stress. And I will give you page numbers as we go here. But again, I don't expect you to be reading it. I just, I do want to show that anything I tell you is going to be represented in that document as well. Although perhaps I can ask in detail if you do have a specific question at the end. If you don't know, Paul, the full group is, we've been around since nineteen eighty-six to the north of New York School District since nineteen ninety-one. Today, our education practice area, which I am an associate manager in that practice area, employs about four hundred people across the U.S. and some in Canada and Europe as well, working with about forty-four hundred school districts, which is over forty-four hundred school districts today, doing all sorts of professional services, public managers, the team, as well as software solutions and some management management work. So really a very broad, inspiring of services that it provides. In the last three years, my team has been working very intensely delivering strategic planning services to districts just like yours. And when I say my team, I'm speaking mainly of people who are resident, obviously you have pages seventeen. There's a few other people who support us from time to time, who are engaged, who work with us. But that's our core team. So when I think of our proposal, I think there's three key parts that I want to stress. The first is, when I say we've been doing this for several years, which doesn't enough, and it's got a proof of approach. So probably the most sensitive part of the proposal you have are pages nine to eighteen, which outlines our approach and methodology, specifically how we would adapt it to F F S D. So when I think of our approach, or I need to describe it in sort of a thumbnail sketch way, there's two problems. There is your first thing, which is focus on data collection. And data collection contains a number of different forms. We outline these toward the end of that section. But recently, we have focus groups where you would work with targeted stakeholder groups that you would work with us to identify and find the right participant. So for example, I'd be a lesbian, they would be stakeholder groups made up from the interior district. The teachers, let's say, from eastern schools. They would be typically recommend partners of local community. So business leaders, post-secondary or other educational partners in the area. Sometimes we get social service organizations involved, which just work with the district where the religious community actually played a big part, they got involved with us as well. So the focus service is one avenue of that collection. For all other ways to do that is we will typically always community form and start with point of service engagement. So for a small district, you might go one, we may have a recommendation to do several. This is probably a private view given by your district. But that's a nice way to hear from stakeholders who may not have an opportunity to participate in the goal shoot. Another sort of broad, spectacular way to reach people is through a survey. There will be development, delivery, online survey. This is a great tool for data collection, a little less personal than doing a focus server very often. But that's to get some very broad and targeted questions out there. And it has potentially thousands of responses depending on how well the survey was and how well the public likes it. Well, also, we interviewed some key voters in this district. So typically that would include all board members inside, all the board members, for example, the superintendent, a few other key staff, those become part of our initial basic data collection. So there are these different ways to be tried to reach out, gather information. By the time we finish that first phase, we want to be able to identify key themes and priorities to the district. Some of these you can probably get today if you know your district and you don't fully know. Some are things that will emerge as we do the data collection. These themes and priorities then come back to you, come back to us, and then become the basis for our second broad base for which is developing efficient, identifying efficient and value, efficient values to the district, and starting to identify key strategic goals. A year of vocal, maybe your R P talks about three to five year, I think three to four year plan. We would want to find several broad goals. And then underneath those goals, develop specific strategies and action sets. Then at the end, we would have a fully formed plan that identifies a key set for a district plan that you're taking, where the resources would come from, who would order the engagement then. And more importantly, as we develop that plan, we'll also solve engagements for the district. So we're going to bring teachers or building leadership in, playing a role in helping in shaping the mission. Our next goal is to make sure that the, once the final document is completed, the final presentations are done, we've got a process in some that is transparent in that conclusion. So there's no perception that this was voices from outside, that it was developed by one particular group. We want both the staffs of the district, as well as families of the community, to feel that it was inclusive, they can play a role in this process. So we also want staff to feel that they have a role in shaping, dealing with, and having to build that plan. So that's our key point number one, to give you this a lot here. But that's our approach, and I think that's the most important part of our document. Part number two, I've already listed you, but that's our team. This engagement will be led by Dr. Sheik Castro, our director of strategic planning services. He's an experienced educator, he can carry out the sort of work of setting up the district, including some that are ongoing today. You would access to include several references in our proposal, which we did, on page twenty-two and twenty-three. Number one, they can all see to one or more members of our team, and all can see to all team cut now. But number two, those references can all see to our commitments, which is really our third point here. You know, P G G is initiated a company by doing things that have measures. We want to make first choices in our engagement there as successful as any other engagement that you're going to read out in the title, whether it's like nothing's been done elsewhere. We're looking to commit the right resources, to bring the right resources together, to be able to produce a successful outcome. We recognize that there's no strategic way to do this. You may be looking at the proposal part of you right now and saying, well, you raise something here that's not applicable to that R P. I accept that. And I will look forward to having a working partnership where we define the right way to shape these services without driving extra costs. Define the right way to create the best possible strategic plan, the best possible strategic planning process for your district. I think that's eight minutes I've done so far. How many do we have?
Oh, you're good. Keep moving.
Okay. I hope, you know, we only submitted the proposal on Friday. I don't suppose you reached out to any of our references, but I would encourage you to do that. I think you would hear, you know, the same thing that I'm telling you about a photo working partnership and really working to make our services meet the needs and work to really understand the community's good work. You know, in the middle of a life tour, when it comes to doing facilitation work like this in the school district, we think it's valuable to be able to bring in a party that's perceived as being neutral and objective. And that's why districts like yours go out and seek external reinforcement to do this work. At the same time, though, we recognize that it's our responsibility to really learn and understand the issue that impacts the community, that are seen as in quirks, or, you know, where fellows may tonight just buy some news to board and just take the responses. But a lot of those we're getting here from individuals who may have children in the school and have a particular concern or have come over from other districts and will possibly have any of the districts that they love to see happening who didn't have that seed. Those might become the basis for some interesting parts of the strategic plan. But that's also our challenge, not only to facilitate clearly and make sure we're going to reach out to that, that should make that that election current parent, but also making sure that we're learning enough about the community, you know, understanding in terms of feedback and work ethic. Those are, just sorry, this is my key point here. I'd love, if you read up, you know, table of our proposal methodology, which you had to start off with, you know. I'm happy to talk more about individual team members, I think there's questions there. These are all folks who've done this before. As you can see by reading through it, myself included, many of the past experience, recent experience working in schools. Another very deep member of our team, chief of planning, is actually a principal on leave. He's been working with us for several years now. So I'd love to table with our team members. And if I may please, if you have it, if you could reach out, I think they include the trigger. I also included the kind of difficult public work. The work we did for the Williamsburg Jake City Academy, Virginia, the district of cultural projects here in the shirt. It's a very diverse community, there were a lot of pictures of the big trust, word about getting involved with. I'm very proud of really sure we developed their, Dr. Conzantino, who was still this superintendent. And that's a public report. The big commission that's directed report is two pieces, which is what you see in the proposal we submitted on Friday. But I think that's very representative of the type of work that will be due. And not all, because you had to very much track them onto what Williams needed. And I think that Dr. Conzantino, which I told you, it also reflects some work by his team as well in terms of feedback they gave us or edits they made as we developed and produced that. So that was engagement, then, hold it, they turned about seven months. I thought one of the things that went on in our proposal, um, we just checked page nineteen and we were demonstrating how we work to feed timelines that you have laid out. These are our feet. I'm happy to talk through those more. But this follows our technical pattern that assuming the next one, we would actually have a project launch and we get started, we need two months to get to our data collection. And that's recognized, we did it in December, it really happened a month. These are the case law rules that turn on our data analysis. Then January, we're working with everyone to get our action planning done and deliver our final plan typically accompanied by some sort of presentation we will have to do or only have to do in February of this next year. You know, I think strategic planning could be done at last time. If you don't give it as much time to the data collection or analysis, I think it could also take longer. But based on experience for district of your side, we believe we should have it done by November.
Very good. Any questions from the board? All right, thank you for your time this evening. And we're going to digest this for about a week and the next one, the next one's going to be made in our decision, so.
All right, Paul, I appreciate everyone's time tonight. I hope you didn't spend any of the sleep and, you know, we're all, any senior just seems happy. have any questions, that will, will, will definitely be dealt with anytime. Thank you very much for your time today.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
The next presentation will be for paper insight by Dr. Greg Larson. I want to call attention to the board that he's here at the point in time that things have been going along very well, so with that, Greg Larson.
Good evening. Good evening. Larry, I was going to talk to this, he said, do about five minutes, assume that the board has a report in front of them and has had a chance to look at it, to highlight a few things, and then be prepared to take questions, which is the same again, pretty, uh, previous Paper to insight, which you know a little bit about us already, but we're a fairly small firm, and I work part-time, retired superintendent, work part-time with a partner in the state of this area. And this project would have two primary participants, although ten distinct partners and other members of the firm would be available to help. The other person who would be working equally with me is Mark Manis, who just retired from Springfield Public Schools and joined us really to help ramp up our work around strategic planning. And I've been doing some for the last several years, had to break together people to assist the firm, and we wanted to add somebody that had strategic planning as a specialty in his background. Mark worked a number of years at Springfield, and anybody that you would talk to that knows our community well, or knows the school district well, would say, he helped turn the image of Springfield Public Schools around within the city of Springfield. Reaching out to people, kind of gradually doing that, not doing that in any kind of magic solution, but by talking to people and bringing their interest and voice into the discussion of the school district, and then doing a good job of marketing the things that they're doing well, and focusing on the things that he knew people in the community cared about in terms of the school. That'd be very surprising in terms of the major focus areas. People said from wherever he talked, well, we want the Springfield Public Schools to be very strongly viewed, run academics, and that's been a concern over, say, the previous several years. So they really focused on that. I also know the superintendent, Harold Ritter, who's been there a good number of years, very successful on student, was in Colorado Springs before he moved there. We actually, Nora and I know each other because we're both involved in the Ballard process. He's also in the family, so we became friends that way, and how we kind of got connected as well. So a little bit about Mark. Our process that was laid out here is exactly not terribly different from what you just heard. There's, you know, kind of good, sound procedures now, especially working with organizations like Bloomberg, where you're meeting a lot of companies and nonprofits who are applying, and they're saying, they have to say, how do you do strategic planning? And reading a lot about it, it does have to begin to get a sense of this sort of logical process follow, follow, and it is quite similar to what I just heard around. It is described in our report. So we would do data collection. I think it's very important to base your strategic plan on perception data and hard data. You may have data around student achievement and other things that, you know, is very much funny to use. We also reach out, do focus groups, do an online survey, and Mark had us develop the technique, he actually was trained in this technique, but apparently at the time of education, a little more out of marketing world, where he works with, with board and the leadership team to identify about twelve individuals that he has extensive conversation with. And he will take members of your staff with him, or I'll go with you as a note taker, and those individuals are carefully selected to represent a wide variety of folks in the community, including naysayers. So you may well say, well, we want the mayor to be, you know, we want somebody that you know is important and, you may have some influential roles, but you really reach out to say, who are people that you want to know about, even though they may not be active participants in the school district? So people that are going to broke that school, people that have young children and are really not sure where, you know, send their kids. Their voice is extremely important to the strategic planning. Kind of looking for two things. One is an in-depth understanding of what is driving their decision-making around whether they're going to involve the school district or not. And the other is, as, as Mark did in Springfield, if you begin to hear the same themes from everybody, then even people that really aren't, all that tied into the school district, then you begin to understand that theme's important, that's out there, you know. In the process, you do that first round of interviews, then you work on developing the themes, and you kind of start to, to shaping of what you think will be the actual strategic planning around particular key themes or objectives, whatever you want to call those. Go back to those people. So a couple months later, you go back and say, we had a conversation, and then we're thinking that the district wants to move these kind of direction, how does that seem to you? That really gives you some, some in-depth. And again, have an online survey, which allows anybody, without the website, anybody, and depending upon really re-planting, if you all have focus groups as well, to kind of get people usually that are similar together, to kind of get a sense of their work. Couple more points. I think what's really shifted in, in the world of strategic planning, especially, I've done as superintendent at Hue and Rockwood. Prior to that, I was in charge of strategic planning at Clayton School District. You know, it was always something we had to do every five years, and kind of thought of it as a take apart task. And I think now, the shift is five years is too long. No one knows what's going to be true in five years. Still have to work with the DESI guidelines, so you have to kind of figure out, but the truth is, a good three-year plan is about as much as you can genuinely forecast and put data together to say, that's likely to be something that you can accomplish. Obviously, you look through that and think about what's going to happen after that, and you're visiting it all the time, so you're, you're, you're working smarter on it, you should get two years in, all the patients and so forth. But it is a process. You know, it should be how you set your budget, how you decide on making your hiring decisions, what direction the school district is going to go in terms of talking to the public, what is your communications and marketing plan, how do you brand yourself? All that comes out of strategic plan. But I think this is frankly much different than it used to be, going back to ten, fifteen years ago. Even DESI's requirements really kind of didn't have the same focus. They were very focused on academics, which strategic planning is very focused on academics, but not so focused on kind of thinking through the community's view of the school, really looking at the value of first of course, of school district. Your perception out there, what can you change that perception if you want to? How can you market yourself effectively as a district people want to engage and be a part of that, that sort of body, all that, and all that. We also assist with implementation, so the timeline that you all have laid out, we would finish in, in February, but be available, Mark and I would be available and other people if we needed it to help your action teams as they actually do the work, so that you do have a process. You have people going about implementation of those action plans to implement the objectives of teams, if you come up with it, we've come up with a process. And we saw doing that for the next several months, which usually leads to a three- and five-month kind of follow-up meetings, you have a strategic planning team, you're going to bring that team back together at that point and say, here's what we've done, what's your reaction to that? It's just, here's things that aren't quite what we thought, and we got into it, but, you know, you're, you're working with folks, so we would help facilitate that, that would sort it in our, your. Questions? And again, thank you very much for letting us comment Tuesday.
Any questions on the board? Dr. Paul.
Sounds good. Thank you. You guys are up here, so.
Sorry.
The next presentation is UNECOM Art, and here to present it is Mr. Dan Burns. Thank you, Dr. Burns, for thanks for the opportunity to visit with you about our approach to the plan, which involves community engagement, and many of the elements and components of what we would do have been explained tonight through other processes that you've heard. However, I think that we may be a little bit of an orange among apples tonight, and so I want to, I want to point that out. Dr. Rod Wright, who's president of UNECOM ARRC, is in, working with school districts in Allen Park tonight, or E with the year. UNECOM ARRC has been in business over forty years, and worked for governmental agencies, primarily school districts, community colleges. I have been working with UNECOM the last dozen years or so after retiring from the Rockwood School District, where I did planning and development for a number of years, and it's a very tough time for Rockwood, as Dr. McLeod and I know, in terms of growth. But lucky just to quickly walk through some of the slides that I had. You have our proposal in front of you that has detailed hints, and so I'm not going to cover a lot of that. You realize that our approach is facilitating a planning process that may be a little different than perhaps called board or RFP, but one of the items in the RFP is very critical to us particularly, for I think the first and fourth in school district, given your situation with your, with your clientele. And, you know, I'm talking about that clear explanation as to how the consultant firm will incorporate a broad range of participants in this process. And from our perspective, this is a critical asset to the planning process for school district. The school district must have the permission of the code for implementation of significant issues. This means that the entire community must have access to the planning and decision process, not just a small group or a committee of individuals. Our approach of strategic and long-range planning for school district is a true community engagement program that includes the extensive communication and involving a large number of district constituents. In essence, the entire community will be invited to participate in this process and have voice in the product. And we think that's, that's very important. This is a quote by Dr. Lucassero, when she was superintendent of Hazelwood School District, when we began our program with Hazelwood first there a few years ago. But I would rather focus on a quote from the current superintendent that was in a letter to the editor of the Post-Sats just, just in the last few days. And if you look at what has been achieved in Hazelwood first, the engagement program that we introduced and worked with Hazelwood for, for a number of years, and just look at the actions that have been accomplished in that district over the last few years, two hundred fifty-five million dollar bond program, implemented Full Day Kindergarten around the district, built four new middle schools, renovated two existing middle schools, and the list goes on and on. And Dr. Brayley, the board president, says, so we upgrades, and things like Full Day Kindergarten, which is an operated facilities, were made possible through the Hazelwood first public engagement process that involved one of the thousand staff members, parents and community members in the decision-making process. We think similar situations, you could get quotes from San Jose School District across on the other side of the state, from Cedar, Illinois, from Clayton, from the school district to the University City, where we've done community engagement and planning processes that transform the school district. San Francisco was able to reach an exit a number of years ago. We're currently working in Naperville School District, it's a suburb of Chicago, during a similar program. We think there are three main components that must be involved, and those must be integrated in an approach for effective planning, or to be successful, real community engagement, we'll learn more about that as we go along, solid community, our public opinion research, and effective communications. I'm not going to say a lot about this particular slide, the ring for us or a jungle, but language is important, and we get language and concepts and direction from doing research, online surveys, telephone surveys, et cetera, and that has to be an important component in the planning process to gather that qualitative data, as well as the qualitative data. In terms of the community engagement itself, there are three, there are a number of key concepts that drive our approach to planning. As I mentioned, you know, we're not going to do anything unless you have permission with your public for key initiatives. And so that means you have to mind the quality of support, but then the understanding, and by involving a lot of folks, thousands of folks, as you've, as you've heard, you can penetrate your community with, with information. The public is resistant to top-down planning, and you've got to be careful in using just a community of fifteen, twenty people to do your planning inside, you know, inside a room. The more that are involved, the more that are going to be available to support your planning when it comes time to, to move that plan. The next item is to take the way forward. Discovery is more powerful than persuasion. People don't want to be cold, they want to be a part of the process, and that's the reason why our process involves anyone, anyone who wants to, who wants to participate. How do I go back? Got you. Our process, like others that you heard, information-driven, data-driven, actually, people have to have data to deal with. So well-planned sessions, driven by information and data, create productive sessions and results. This is a picture of a program you just finished in Iowa City. And the next couple of slides, okay, our, uh, next couple of slides providing quotes, I won't read all that, do you got a couple of things to highlight or look at? You can see that four hundred plus people were involved in this, and it says that throughout the room, you could see the intense productive discussions going on as people reach incentives. Next slide. Again, you can, you can read this, but these are, these were letters, letters to, to the local newspapers, from particip, organizing the productive exercise in citizen participation, engage each other, structure meaningful, and yes, often openly partisan debate, addressing the need, plan for future growth, or, or due to plans of the, of the school district. I felt like we were all actually working with each other. These are all important unsolicited comments from our participants in the process. It is the third- It is the third component that we think is tremendously important is communication. Communication has to happen a month before you start the process, in our view, so that everybody knows that they have access to the table to participate. And this bracket just simply says that, you know, again, if you have a group of twenty-five people in a room, and no one knows what's going on in terms of the planning, the support level out in the masses of the community may not be there in terms of supporting your client. Communication is essential. And the next slide, we like to say, you know, you, you know, you communicate seven times seven ways, so you use rarely any vehicle possible. And the blank social media, Facebook, has been tremendous in terms of, in terms of participation of citizens in the process and to alert them to their availability to the process. This picture of above is St. Joseph's School District, five hundred plus folks in the gymnasium around tables making decisions. This night, they made the decision to go to middle schools. On another night, they made the decision to, to, in terms of what size their school districts and elementary schools are, the key decisions. Everybody had the opportunity to participate. They've used video, Facebook, website. And again, these are pictures of two large crowds from our program in Iowa City. You see one vision, we always brand our programs, so that they can stand alone. And we use media, it's a total open process. Media loves it because it gives them opportunity to report. Finally, one of the things that we would stress is that, you know, the program that we bring to you will not, we will not force a canned program to the Berks and Thorson School District. We will work with a small facilitating team, and that facilitating team made up of representatives from your citizenry. In fact, an important fact, a part of our program that resulted in success is it must be citizen-led. So a small facilitating team, and that facilitating team will work with us in terms of designing calendar, programs, sessions, until we reach the final presentation to you, which will be the final document for your planning process. Obviously, it will end in goals, strategies, and objectives, and action plans, just like others that you've heard and I. I will say this upfront, that planning through community engagement cannot be rushed. And I would say to you that if you're, if you use our process, your timeline is probably too aggressive. The community, if you're going to involve the community in the process, they can't be rushed. They have to think through what, if they're smart enough to figure out, they have to rush them. And so they have to have self-control in terms of, in terms of decisions and key initiatives that are coming towards the school district. Quickly, through those slides, we have our references and other information in detail in front of you, but I'd be happy to, as others have responded, any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Aronson. Take a five-minute break. Filing anybody?
The next presentation is by Experience with Man. And here to present is Steve.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. This is my colleague, Gigi Mix. And we're here to share with you a lot about strategic planning to help your school district be successful. Since this is an educational setup, we're going to give you a quiz on our RFP. It will be an open book test, and we will re-link it. But all kidding aside, between the two of us, besides working in education, we've been in industry for thirty-plus years. And seven years ago, we decided it's time to start giving back to the community. And so we started Experience with Man, I'm the original founder. And our focus is to give back to the community and bring all the best practices and tools, working with hundreds of companies across multiple industries, to the nonprofit world. That it used to be either a nonprofit or you run like a business. And today, it's really, you're a nonprofit and you have to run like a business. It's not even an organization. So today, we'd like to share with you some of the best practices in strategic planning that will be focused on your needs and to help you be successful going forward. We're going to cover the approach and process, the timeline. We understand what the timeline is by February of next year. We have it in your handouts, you'll see the detailed timeline. It not only shows fifty or sixty steps to get there, and we expect, again, working on your schedule, we can get there by the middle of December, but also the estimated hours of effort it would take for both our organization and the legislature. We'll talk about the deliverables, keep the end in mind, and how do you measure progress going forward? So it's very goal-based, metric-based. What ongoing support you have afterwards? So once a plan is developed, approved by the board, how do we support you going forward so the plan becomes operationalized? And many of our clients, we come back year after year after year just to make sure they're moving forward. And then we'll sum it up with the value proposition. How's that sound? Pretty good? All in nine more minutes. So the methodology is very collaborative, it builds ownership and commitment, and it starts with gathering information. So you've heard this before. One of the things that we like to do is focus on the eighty-twenty. So what's the twenty percent of the old Pareto principle? So what's the twenty percent of the information you need to make up eighty percent of what decisions you have to make in the areas of focus? Because people get lost in analysis paralysis. So we will survey key stakeholders, and then based on conversations with you on which stakeholders that are important, we will give our input, but again, it's a collaborative effort, that we'll interview those key stakeholders. And then we'll also take a look at your internal processes, your internal reporting, your internal financials, and then we'll bring all of our external best practices, working with lots of different companies and many nonprofits. We've done about thirty-five or forty strategic plans. Some of the clients in St. Louis go to Business Bureau, recruit it down, United Way, et cetera. We'll take all this information and pull it to a consolidated report and focus on those critical things. And then we'll hold a strategy workshop. Typically, this is a one- to one-and-a-half-day workshop. In some cases, you may have a two-half-days. And from that strategy workshop, there'll be the draft strategic plan that's developed. Then it'll be pulled together, polished, and then presented to the board for approval. And then there'll be, of course, the execution piece. So how do you have ongoing support, building operational plans, building metrics and goals, being very specific accountability for results, getting readiness for change, and then going forward? Another key point, and this is one of Gigi's roles, is project execution, project management. So throughout the project, you'll see a plan, you have a high-level summary plus a detail in your book. And we will actually, on a weekly basis, meet with you every week. We'll talk about issues, we'll talk about status against the plan to make sure that this is done on time. So this is what the timeline looks like. We typically see strategic plans taking anywhere from twelve to fourteen weeks, maybe sixteen, depending on your comfort level. And again, around your calendars, we've done them a little bit faster, and we've done them a little bit longer. So based on our current understanding, because we do all the heavy lifting, we're looking for your insights and your information, but we drive all the processes, all the analysis, and then present that to you to make decisions. So we kind of put a detailed summary, our summary in front of you, and the detail is in your blue binder that lays this out, the fifty or sixty steps it takes, step by step of how to get this done, the hours it takes by each organization to move along. So at the end of the day, what do you get? It's our understanding from your RFP that you'd like to survey about fifteen or twenty. We've surveyed as many as two-hundred, four-hundred, five-hundred people. But we can administer the survey as little or as many people as we like. Again, we will help you identify the criteria for those, we'll also conduct interviews. Now, we have done here two before, but based on your needs, we could do six, seven, up to ten. And then we'll consolidate all that into a report. So now you have all that information summarized, the common themes, the common threads that you'll see. And then we'll facilitate a strategic planning workshop, we'll document all the minutes, we'll give you a board presentation, and then in your handout, we'll show you a dashboard and goal tracking form, and then implementation plans by initiative. So that's what you get. At the end result of doing all that, we give an approved strategic plan. All the plans we've done have always been approved by the board a hundred percent. Implementation is always taken off, and then we always provide it ongoing coaching. And we really value the opportunity. On this weekend, we're helping do a retreat of a strategic plan. And last year, we were brought back every six months, every year, and we don't charge to come back to attend future board meetings, we just do that as a long-term relationship. And what does that lead to? It leads to your results. Why did we choose to do this? We feel that nonprofits, special education, build the gap between what society needs and what businesses provide. And certainly, education makes a major difference in people's lives, children's lives, families, and communities. So we're here, we started our firm, and we specialize in the nonprofit world in all different capacities because of all the wonderful things that it provides. Here's an example of an implementation plan. I teach a course at the University of Missouri-St. Louis called Project Execution. And it's really critical that all your initiatives have a plan. Not only do we promote, we talk about relentless focus of the eighty-twenty, but we talk about simplicity. So we don't talk about hundreds of things, we don't talk about thousands of things, we talk about the critical things that are the most important to you. So here's an example of a plan, one page, so one-page management, of membership enhancement. They have three major projects, recruiting, engagement, and retention. This could be something similar to what you would have in recruiting new students, engaging students, and retaining students, or graduating students. So after every initiative's assigned to an owner, they build a plan, they lay it out by quarter, by month. And the next step is, on a monthly basis, the board can review the progress of every plan. So in this case, the key projects show the status, red, yellow, green, am I on schedule, behind schedule, or red would be having trouble with you to catch up. What's the progress for this last period, and what's your plan for next month? So every board member has a chance to see the focus of where we're going, what the results are, the accomplishments we've made, equally as important, where are we next month? And on one or two pages, you can have all your six, eight, or ten initiatives on one dashboard. The other thing that's important is the goals. So we provide, I think if you talk to our references, I think we gave you a list of twenty or so, they'll say we probably have the best toolkit of anyone they've ever seen because the tools we have are simple but effective. Unfortunately, some of us have accounting backgrounds, we're experts in the balance scorecard, our clients have been inducted in the Balance Scorecard Hall of Fame, we do process improvement, capacity planning, and we have all these different tools, and this is one of them, where you assign goals, you assign the goals by quarter or by month, you track actual to the goal, and you see if you're on or behind schedule, both current period and year-to-date. So again, simple forms, yet effective. I think that's the key. Too many times, organizations try to execute, and they get so complicated, nobody knows what they're talking about, their eyes get glazed over. So one-page management, simple, the other's complicated. So the post-planning support gets formally for two months. So we want to make sure we attend your board meetings, we have one-on-one meetings with anyone in this room or anyone in the hotel, that there's a conversation, discussion, decision-making needs to be made, we can facilitate those meetings, and that we're always accessible by phone call and any email. But the relationship really goes on beyond that. So we would encourage and invite the opportunity to come back every six months, once a year, whenever, to help in a board meeting, to help facilitate the decision-making process. We learn, and we build long-term relationships, and that's something we do. We value it. So here's our value proposition. We bring expertise in strategic planning. I ran strategic planning through the one-two, I was a partner with the one-two, a partner with Grant Thornton, and worked for Monsanto for twenty years. So we are experts in strategic planning, we ran against the big guys, McKinsey, Booz Allen, the Boston Consulting Group, and we cleaned up after them because they were too complex, too complicated, and they charged by the PowerPoint slide. So we can bring to you best practices of not just education, but we can see all the different perspectives from all the different industries, and tell you some of the paradigms out there that you're not seeing that could be done. We also have expertise in execution and the tools, you're seeing some of them there. So we just don't talk about, we help execute, we have plans, we teach a class in project execution, we teach project management, Gigi and I run projects across the world, so we know how to execute, and we know how to run projects, including process improvement, quality improvement, balance scorecard, and all the different tools that we need. We also bring industry expertise. So both of us are, we teach at different universities, we've worked in some of the nonprofits education. Actually, I was talking with Larry, we did a good-to-great workshop for a middle school. I'm not sure if you're aware of the study that was done in Arizona called BPIs. But when we did that workshop for the middle school, we did a good-to-great session for the whole school. We had candidates and police, we had the principal and her staff, we had all the teachers and some parents. And so we ran a full-day workshop of all the good-to-great principals, good-to-great teachers, good-to-great students, good-to-great schools. The BPIs study, if you haven't seen it, go onto the website, how BPIs, how twelve schools in Arizona, primarily minorities, broken homes, low budgets, beat the odds of three-hundred schools, how they outperformed everybody. So we were really trying to bring you back to St. Louis, and we haven't given up yet. And then the other thing is, we provide the ongoing support and coaching. So that's what we love to do. Sometimes people ask us, why do you give so much? And I would ask people the same question, why do you give so much? It's because you care. And so we are always accessible, we're not like law firms or accounting firms that charge by the hour. You see in our proposal, we have a fixed price, no extras, it's just get it done. And that's your D. I have a question.
Yeah.
Before I give you a test.
Before you give me a test.
Have you written it hurt like that?
Yeah, okay. On your survey, you're fifteen to twenty people. Do you feel that you'd be more comfortable with a larger pool?
Yes, the only reason I put that down, I thought I read the RFP, that that's what you were talking about.
You may well have.
Yeah, I think you should.
My point is, what would you feel comfortable with?
Since you're sending out a survey to a broad population, and you're not going to get a hundred percent response, I would feel more comfortable surveying several hundred. Because if we did several hundred with the right mix, unlike a typical survey, and Gigi's background in marketing and statistics and all that is beyond mine, but if we did two-hundred surveys with people that are engaged, we'd probably get back thirty or forty percent. Because people would follow up, it could be personal notes from each of you, or some of the teachers going out to everybody we would survey. And so if we got back, if we sent out two hundred, two and fifty, we got back eighty to a hundred, something like that, with the right mix, and then we follow up with some interviews, and if necessary, we do a focus group. So we put down fifteen or twenty so that you saw that we read the RFP, but if you asked for a recommendation, it would be a lot more.
Thank you.
That'd be one more question, I'll ask you some questions. Well, thanks for the opportunity. If you have any other questions, feel free to send us an email, phone call, or just holler. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming tonight. All right, I think we're... Is this the last one, Larry? is Brian Day.
So Larry said that since ours last, I could have an extra twenty minutes. Thank you for your time this evening. Uh, I thought we could cover really three, three topics. The first is why, why CSI, uh, why collaborative strategies. Uh, the second is a little bit about our process, and I feel, uh, my esteemed colleagues this evening have done a lot of the heavy lifting on that account for me already. Um, and then, uh, the third, the third point I wanted to cover was the deliverables, so what you did out of it. Uh, so we'll talk about those three things. Um, very briefly, a little bit of background on CSI. Uh, we were a thirteen-person management consultancy based here in St. Louis, and, uh, we have, uh, we've done a lot of work in the education field, uh, but we are not education experts. Uh, we have zero ex-supern talents on our staff, zero ex-principals, no recovering, uh, district personnel or public sector personnel on our, on our team. But we have worked with institutions like Washington University, UMSO here in St. Louis, New City School, uh, the Magic House, uh, all of the education programs that they run that I know Dr. Chippoy is familiar with. Um, so, so our clients, for the most part, are entrepreneurs and engineers. Uh, actually, the bulk of our business is in the for-profit world, and not, uh, too unlike, uh, my predecessor here, we like to think that a lot of the good practices in the for-profit world hold, uh, just as much, uh, weight and pretense in the nonprofit world. Uh, so, so our clients are innovators, they, they, they are looking for us to push them, challenge them, which we're happy to do. We tee up decisions, um, and then let you make, and then, and then let you make calls, so that you feel like your fingerprints are all over those, those points. Uh, the second point that I wanted to cover under, under why CSI, uh, is, ask you with our style, and, and we're very pragmatic in nature. Um, we will not, um, boil the ocean, um, asking you for a gazillion different facts and figures about, uh, the district before we embark in on the process in that first diagnostic phase. We know every one of you and every one of the staff has a day job, no one is a hundred percent dedicated to strategic planning, I don't think, except for us. Um, so we're very mindful of that, uh, and having done this several hundred times, uh, we have a good sense of, of the facts that matter, and so we're somewhat surgical on our approach to what we, uh, gathered in that first diagnostic process. Uh, we're also not in the binder business. Um, if you want a one-hundred-page deliverable at the end of this, do not pick collaborative strategies. Um, if you want a short, impactful plan, then we should talk. Um, I hope that our proposal was among the shortest, if not the shortest, while still being clear, uh, in covering all the important points that you were looking for, uh, in your RFP. Um, but the, the last thing that I would say about CSI that sets us apart is our bias to action. Um, you've heard, um, from some folks tonight about the perils of working with a small team and the risks that's associated with that. We totally embrace that. We think that's absolutely the right way to go. Again, and if that horrifies you, you should not pick us. Um, our experience is that the planning process should look like an hour and a half. Okay? And at the beginning of the planning process, you do absolutely wanna solicit a lot of input, and so our proposal, like everybody else's, goes through a number of ways to gather feedback from staff, you know, parents, students, teachers, yourselves, et cetera. But then, to take, uh, to take the next step and make the difficult decisions, our experience suggests that large groups of people just can't do that. I joke around in our planning sessions that I think I'm a pretty good facilitator, but sometimes it's pretty hard to get twenty people to agree on what time date it is. Okay? So when we're talking about weight issues, uh, with regards to the financial future of the district, or what we're gonna do, uh, to, to, to advance our predation scores, our, our point of view is that it's hard to get fifty people to agree on those things. So we have a large, uh, funnel at the beginning of the process, we have a small team make some of the initial high-level decisions, and then the process flares out at the end. To re-involve those folks will be most effective by the implementation of the plan. And so when it comes to designing the action plans and the details of the plans, of course, we do wanna reach out to people. So those are a few things that I think set our approach or, or CSI apart from, uh, some of the other concepts that you heard this evening. Um, I do wanna note, so the second thing that I, that I alluded to, uh, was that I wanted to talk about our process, and as I said, I will do that very briefly, because I think eighty percent of the processes that have been proposed tonight are mostly the same. Um, so ours, ours is no different in that regard, other than the approach and the style that I said that we take doing that. Um, I do also wanna note that typically, maybe this sounds kinda crazy, but we actually develop our proposals with our clients, so we don't have the luxury of doing that with you all, and of course, we understand, uh, we understand why. Um, but should you, uh, should you choose to want to work with collaborative strategies, we would want to review all of those steps with you, uh, to add or subtract as appropriate. We don't feel like there's one way, one magical way, uh, that, uh, that, there's, there's one magical way to, to gather all of the information and create a plan. So we believe that there's flexibility in our approach. Uh, typically, we find in nonprofit organizations, um, that your timeline that you're looking for is overly aggressive. Sometimes we move that fast, uh, but oftentimes, again, to be honest, it's hard for the client organization to move that fast, because you all have day jobs, you and the staff have day jobs. So, uh, I, I want you to know that if February is the magic date, then in a dialogue, we can add or subtract the scope of work to get you to there. But of course, as you can see in our, our proposal as it stands today, we're not, we don't quite get there. Okay? So last, uh, last point to cover is on deliverables. So what, what do you get when you're done, besides a headache? Um, so the first point, uh, the first deliverable is, is your mission. Uh, we already have a mission, but we like to confirm that, because really, that describes the enduring purpose of the district. And all of the decisions that we make throughout the planning process have to be consistent with that purpose. The second deliverable are goals. Uh, and I, I saw on your, uh, YouTube site, uh, you've already done some planning, thought around your goals, so we can certainly leverage those and build upon those. But that's the, that's the second deliverable, and it gives you a sense of destination. Not a sense of destination, any set of priorities will do, so we wanna have a, a firm idea of where the district wants to go. Third deliverable is priorities. So you all can't do everything that you want to, I think you probably already know that. So we have to make choices, make our choices. By the way, that's why we like working in smaller teams. But those priorities are the list of things that we think will get the district the furthest towards its goals. Okay? Then each priority has an action plan, it's a who, what, when, and where of, of, of the plan. Uh, it's, it's where we can apply, uh, financial logic, uh, and make sure that we have both the time and budget to execute everything that comes up in the planning process. And it also gives us the opportunity to apply metrics and scorecards to each of the initiatives, because it's brilliant, as if we all will be in the planning process tonight, I'm confident that we will be brilliant. About thirty days after the plan is done, you, you will get a new bit of information, especially in Missouri, especially in education, these things. Okay? So we wanna give you the tools or the mechanisms to make course adjustments, uh, in, in implementation. Um, we don't wanna waste your time, we don't want you to waste our time, so in order for this plan to be productive, it has to be used and it has to be updated, so all along the way, as I said, we'll have that bias to action. So those are the three points that I wanted to cover, and I'd welcome any questions if you have for me.
Any questions?
I don't know the score of the card games. I said, I don't know the scores of the card game, sorry.
Oh, now that's really tamed it. I can find that if we can help. Hopefully, it's not too little or too much, I can spend the last few games. So, yeah. Well, thank you for your time tonight, it's great you could come.
Thanks.
All right. So I believe that completes tonight's business. Uh, this was a study session, it was just meant to be here for the presentations of, of the different, uh, facilitators and, uh, information gathering for the board. Uh, next, uh, Wednesday, the eleventh, at Oak School, we'll have our next board meeting, and at that time, we'll, we'll make our decision on which, which firm we'll, we'll choose. Give us a little more time to read over the mountain of information that was given to us and digest a little bit, and, uh, go prepare. So I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Move adjourn to adjourn session.
It's been moved by most of them and seconded by all of them. Uh, Mr. Shabow.
Mr. Reber.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Schroeder.
Aye.
I go aye.
Aye.
Marketed and informed.
Aye. Thank you all for coming tonight.